Call the work session to order. Mayor Bayor- Mayor Boyer is out of town. So she asked me to fill in for her and just remind the Republic and the public that as Mayor Pro Tem, I still retain my privilege to vote and participate in discussion. So this is a study session. We have three things on the agenda. Comprehensive plan update, strategic plan update, and code enforcement authority. Uh, I guess, uh, would anyone like to add anything? Seeing none, then, um, we'll proceed. We're gonna scratch the comprehensive plan update, right?
Melanie is not here. No, everybody should have gotten an email of comprehensive plan. But Melanie is not here to answer questions.
Okay.
So we can move on to, it's supposed to say strategic priorities.
Policies or priorities? Priorities, right?
Right, rather than the strategic plan update.
And we should have at your station, the list, the list of the 2024 strategic priorities. Talking down into, what, five categories, housing, downtown revitalization, new personnel, other, and code enforcement. And Weston has a report to give us.
He does, so I can go over that real quick. So if you look on the, amongst all of these papers that we have on our desk, that the con- the, the concrete plan for divesting city lots, acquired lots, the fire station, public restrooms, we are actually working on the divestment of city lots and the procedures in which we do that because there are different scenarios that we have to work through. So we are actually talking about that and having those policies put into place. We have not discussed much in regards to the, the existing fire station, what we're gonna do with that. But we'll be planning on it and the public bathrooms. But Weston, uh, when it comes to the code enforcement officer and trying to clean up properties in alignment with our strategic priority, he wanted to pass along that this year, the structures that were removed in the West End, there were seven trailer houses removed. One house was removed and one pole barn.
And some of those were done privately.
Yes. Structures that were removed and renovated in Fairfield Estates, there were eight trailer houses removed. There were, there's one trailer waiting to be removed and two trailers to be renovated. Then in structures that were removed and renovated in the rest of the community, there have been four houses torn down, there have been nine houses renovated, and five garages and sheds torn down. And houses that have been tagged and are for sale, there are four. And then he has, in conclusion, we have cleaned up thirty-eight houses and had four, and have tagged four houses that are currently on the market for sale. We have several, uh, properties that are in our system that are in the process of six fifty-seven A.
Is that a question?
Yeah.
When you say tagged, you mean red-tagged?
Yes, they're, they're tagged for condemnation and cannot be occupied.
Well, inhabitable.
Is there a relationship between the tagging and that the, the houses are for sale? Or i- is there some kind of
Correlation.
correlation between the two?
I don't, I don't believe so, 'cause
It's just that they are tagged and they're also for sale. It's not like we tagged them and then the owners are like, we're gonna put them up for sale, so.
Yes. They put them up, right. Yeah, a lot of these property owners that have these houses, they can't either afford to fix them up. We have some that were inherited, they don't even live here.
Right.
And they just have this property and they don't have anybody to clean them up or they're not hiring somebody to do that, so Weston's working through that. So, back to the strategic priorities. The mayor would like for us to revisit any of these that we have questions on.
Uh, can I make a comment about the public bathrooms?
Absolutely, you're, you have
So, the public, public bathroom issues had been referred to property committee. And I just wanna summarize kinda some of the options that might be in front of us to do with that building. According to Mayor Boyer, someone has expressed an interest in purchasing that building, but we haven't seen an offer yet. And, uh, the city administrator is currently trying to acquire an assessment, evaluation of that building.
Yes.
That's one option. At property committee, we had discussed the possibility of turning it into a half bathroom, half visitor center, uh, building. So reduce the number of toilets and increase, uh, an office space on one side. Uh, the third choice would have been just to tear it down. And the fourth choice would be, what did they say this afternoon? I can't remember. The fourth option.
Tear it down and
Oh, no, uh, beautification committee had submitted a lost application to revitalize it and they wanted, uh, somewhere in the order of three hundred thousand dollars to bring it back up to, um, acceptable conditions without changing the layout. So, um, at some point, I guess, the property committee should meet and get presentations on all those options and then make one recommendation to council as to what to do with it.
It might be nice too, if they're like beautification community, committee or, um, feel like Terry Baker also talked about, you know, the benefit to the city of keeping that property. But if there's some way we could get some kind of mock-up or some idea, if anyone wants, you know, if the beautification committee wants to put something together, so we could kinda see what it would look like.
Right.
That would be a benefit if that's what we're, I'm betting.
Beautification submitted a request with loss for fifty thousand dollars and they were raising another hundred and forty or two hundred thousand dollars. But we didn't see any
Through an art grant.
Huh?
It was through an art grant, which was kind of interesting.
So, we haven't seen
There's murals involved and all that.
Okay, so we haven't seen details about what that would look like, so. That's all I have on the bathrooms.
Oh, keep going.
We did that, done.
So, another, the things that we are working on is, you know, get empty buildings occupied. We're talking, discussing about, uh, vacant building registry. We are working on all of those things. The, you know, ways to support current businesses and attract new businesses, two-way streets, research to restrict first floor downtown to retail only via the code, and again, back to the restrooms. Then we went into the personnel, that, the director of planning and zoning, utilities clerk, NIT liaison, director of finance. All of those things were removed from the budget because we can't afford them. It would be nice to help us focus more on these, 'cause we're all just kind of, we piecemeal our efforts and, you know, the more bodies we have, many hands make light work.
Doug, can I ask a clarifying question on that?
Yes, ma'am.
These are just city council votes, right?
Yes.
So, I guess I would be really interested in seeing what your request is and Melanie's or, you know, everyone within city hall's request is for those positions, because you guys are the ones that are doing the work. Like, we're not doing it.
Yeah, okay.
If we had, like, second Melanie personnel. Melanie's assistant.
She's the go-to person.
Whoever's gonna take off some of the, her
So to me, that's really important.
Okay.
I, I don't wanna make a staffing decision without your input and everyone within city hall, so.
We'll sit and discuss. Some of the other things that, that we've been working on, the website design and update, we really need to do that, we really can't afford it. The review of, uh, the agreements with MIU, I think this is supposed to say Fairfield Schools.
Yeah.
And Grow Fairfield Chamber, CVB, FA, the FACC, twenty-eighties. So we are going through all of those things, improvements, possible, uh, grant writers, those sorts of things. We are doing those, but again, the, the contracts that we have, we're reviewing those and I've got a franchise agreement that's sitting on my desk now that, that we're working on because we're collecting most of those fees to offset our budget, but some of those contracts are out of date and it's gonna take us a while. And we are creating a spreadsheet of, there are so many, so many contracts that we have that we, we don't even know are there and they're, they're operating without a contract. And that's kind of an issue for us, that we shouldn't be doing that. And then lastly, the code enforcement, the council, these are the priorities that we would like for code enforcement. Look at houses, rental inspections, animal at large, yards are overgrown grass, parking right away, sidewalks and trees. The, the hard truth, the hard reality, again, with the animals at large, we don't have the infrastructure. We don't have the, the animal control officer, we don't have the equipment, we don't have the truck. That officer needs to be trained in tranquilizing and we need a place to take this animal, house this animal. We need a, something to transport that animal, those sorts of things. It's something that apparently they've been discussing for years. And once again, when we talk about priorities, it kinda gets put on the back burner. They exist, but it's really hard for us to, to handle that, so. And then, the, the yards and what have you, you know, we're working on a plan for those things as well.
As far as the animals at large, that's to me one of those, um, items that could potentially pay for itself if there was a fine, you know, I mean, we have a lot of frequent flyers in town that are out all, all the time. I see it on social media constantly. I, I'm curious what, like, if you could come up with a budget of what we would have to charge per fine to pay for that position.
Okay.
I'd be interested in knowing that.
My understanding too is it's an issue of where to put the animal, right?
Yes.
Right.
Get it.
The containment.
You have to put it someplace until the owner comes and retrieves it or they don't. And I think that the vet clinic used to do that, but they don't any longer, so I'm not sure too where we would put them.
And Noah's Ark is constantly full and they're not interested either.
Could we, could we hire someone to be on an on-call, on-call basis to pick up an animal? It's not gonna be a full-time job for sure. I don't know how many animals a year that we would pick up, but that's a possibility. And if they're on call, we charge enough for the procedure, then there's no cost to the city.
Right, yeah.
And, and we had discussed the partnership with, again, with the county and I have ideas, and not all good ones, but, you know, I talked about, you know, in order for us to get an animal, two of veterinarian that is available during the week, but not the weekends, because
Or nights.
Or nights or what have you, that we get one of those prefab sheds and we have a couple of kennels so that we can quarantine the animal. Then you have to have somebody feed, water the animal, 'cause I think you have to quarantine them for like ten days.
That's if they've bitten somebody. We're just talking about at large.
Just picking them up and then we take them somewhere. But we really don't have an animal shelter and animal shelters are quite expensive, but what do we do? And then, you know, then we have to look into the ordinances that we have an animal for thirty days. You know, we try to adopt them out and then, you know, do they put them down? We try to find their owners, those sorts of things, because it could be, potentially, if we start collecting these animals
Right.
and no place to put them, and then all of a sudden, we've got a stockpile of, you know, thirty, forty dogs and ten cats.
The Heartland Humane Society, they're based out of a tomahawk, but, um, when I was housekeeping for my parents one time, they had a random dog show up and it somehow got into their garage while there were contractors there. And I found, we found it and it wouldn't go away, 'cause it'd been there overnight. And so I contacted them and they came and got it and he got adopted. And I s- I mean, they're adopting dogs out constantly and I've never seen that they're full.
Yeah.
So maybe we could partner with them.
And maybe transport, um, what was the name of that?
Heartland Humane Society.
Okay.
They're, they're in a tomahawk?
Uh-huh.
If we had a stockpile of animals, the thirty-four dog case that we had, we had, uh, several conversations with the Animal Rescue League of Iowa and the Animal Rescue League of Des Moines. They were prepared to find placements for up to sixty animals. But you gotta give them a bunch of time, plus they wanted a court order about it and they wanted some understanding if there was gonna be them coming down and getting animals and so forth, uh, how to reimburse. Uh, and, uh, so it, there is a way to do it under the animal ordinance and have the owners pay restitution. If we have a personnel, uh, ala, Dave, I don't know if you remember or not, what kind of, uh, pay arrangement was there with Kendrick Wilson? Was he a full-time officer schedule? We've had a civil enforcement officer before that was strictly animal control. That, we don't have for the budget, but, um, anyway, the restitution provisions, a magistrate could order up to sixty-five hundred dollars of restitution. The ones that stick in my mind, we had at least one restitution situation where, with twenty-some animals, uh, there was five thousand and some dollars of restitution ordered and a big part of it was for boarding at the vet clinic. I think the vet, vet clinic unfortunately has felt kind of ill-used uh, and it isn't, uh, it isn't that we've been rude to them or anything like that, but sometimes these things pop up at the wrong times and, uh, they're not open for business, but we still have to have a place for animals. The Animal Rescue League had a discussion with us about maybe ten different places in southeast Iowa where you could take some animals, but maybe only two or three at a time. And so if we had a part-time person, we had a fee schedule for having to deal with an animal and place it. And we added that to our enforcement ordinance and maybe some provisions detailing how that works with restitution. I think our magistrate would support us on that.
So does our animal control officer need special training? Certification of some kind?
We didn't before.
More liability with dog bites, but no extra additional training.
Okay.
But John, isn't it different than, I mean, like, if you, as a private citizen, find a dog and, you know, you don't know who's it is, maybe you can take it to a shelter and they can adopt it out right away. If we are, as a city, have a policy of like, you know, picking up stray dogs or dogs who are at large, we can't just then get rid of them immediately, right?
Yeah, we've gotta follow
Yeah, there's a certain procedure, that's why we have to like find a place to house them first and
Seizure that takes place when we grab somebody's property like that.
Right, so it's different, it's a little bit more involved?
I, the Humane Society follows that same rule. They published it for however many days before they would allow the dog to be adopted. So, it might be in sync with what the city would be required to do.
And the other thing that we had thought about was kinda mixing the duties of an animal for, or an animal control officer with, uh, parking enforcement, with all these other things and whether that would fall, I would assume, under the police department or whether that would fall under planning and zoning with, assisting with, with our code enforcement officer because they do, they kinda co-mingle, but they could, they could operate off of that, we could figure that out. So, we're still working on it, but we definitely, there, there are two things besides the officer that we need in place and that is the equipment and the, the facility. And it doesn't have to be anything lavish, it just, a facility needs to be climate-controlled. It needs to be, you know, we have to have food and water and you have to have the kennel and it's gotta be insulated, what have you. And then we have to have a truck to transport the animals with crates and so on.
Have you found what that would cost or like what kind of, you know, like
Why did we get rid of it in the first place, like if it was
I'm just thinking of those, you know, ones that had sheet buildings or whatever.
Yeah.
It was probably our only budget-neutral, uh, personnel. Um, with that being said, um, our community service officer made enough money, but that included parking citations and we had meters then and he would walk the square. But it was still pretty close because we charged before we had a place to take him, it was a fifty-dollar pickup fee. And then the vet clinic would charge him a storage for every night and all the shots they had to give him, but the shots kept increasing, so they weren't spreading all the disease dogs had. And that was the hugest complaint from the citizens, is every dog pickup was about a hundred dollars to go get your dog. If it was an escape artist, you spent a lot of money, um, to our city budget.
Well, you've got also, there's two other veterinarians, uh, locations near town. One's out on the east edge of town and the other one's Bill Pollock. They have limitations on what they're willing to do, but I was wondering if maybe we, uh, I'd, I'd be glad to call all three of the locations and see if there's some way maybe we could share the wealth uh, as far as, it's, it's a project that nobody wants to take on all of it, but, uh, if we're gonna do some private contracting maybe between the three places, uh, I, I think when I say that, uh, the vet clinic out on, uh, Burlington, uh, felt ill-used for a while, I think we, we had two or three cases where we had fights in court with multiple other attorneys on the defense side questioning whether we had any right to restitution. And the judge always decided in our favor, but it's still, uh, vet, vet clinic sometimes waited for months to get paid anything. And then the court would allow the person that was ordered to pay restitution installment payments. So, it fell on us to pay out of city hall and then see what we could get back, so.
I, their biggest complaint to us was more of a not having enough room, because they were a vet clinic first and, and we're picking up two to three dogs a day, loose dogs, when we were picking them up. It's just they kept increasing the times that they were completely full and just didn't have room. And, and when the old veterinarian, retired Dr. Miller, on the new place wasn't interested in that because, um, it takes a lot away, like he said, a lot of staff and a lot of staff getting bit by dogs that, you know, young kids that are going there to lock the dog in the middle of the night or in the morning to feed the dogs. And we were getting calls like that all the time.
I might have a different idea too. I'll talk to you about it.
Yeah, bet.
Okay, we got one more item, we should do it before we run out of time here. So, uh, code enforcement authority.
So, basically, there's a discussion with John in passing and having Weston, the code enforcement officer, when he writes citations for yard cleanups and so on, that we have the ability for him to write tickets. And then instead of going to magistrate court, they can come to council and the council can work with that. And then John, that's kind of
Right, we have a procedure in place right now, Doug, where, uh, on our city side of traffic enforcement, uh, they, you can use a yellow envelope and the officer can treat it as an infraction that's payable just by dropping, uh, your penalty in the, uh, deposit box out at the law center. And Weston was thinking, why not do that with some of these lesser violations? Instead of having everybody come upstairs to court to sort things out. If they disagree with us, they should come up, but if they don't and really just wanna pay their fine, uh, let them pay it. That is, is sorta limited as far as the kinds of things you might do it with, uh, mowing or brush or things that are a pickup of some garbage in the yard or things like that. Weston could easily cite them, do a door hanger, yellow ticket that you could drop in the drop box uh, and it would save a lot of procedural due process things that happen down the line um, if we make it more simple like that. If, uh, we have that though, there's still always gonna be some people wanna argue about it. We still are gonna have some of those cases in court and I've explained to him that, uh, having that become part of our nuisance and housing, uh, and building maintenance code enforcement will get us fewer things in court, but it won't eliminate going to court on some of those things. So I think he understands that, but, um, as far as adding something to the ordinance, I think probably, uh, there are some things right now that in the past, council has had some preferences on some of the things we've added to this enforcement stuff that kept fines low. I think Weston has kinda flipped on that as far as not necessarily wanting the fines to be low. Uh, we've got a couple of our ordinance having to do with maintenance right now that the fines a hundred dollars or thirty days in jail just because of things that haven't been brought into line with what our general penalty section are for the city, which is fifty to five hundred dollars for simple misdemeanors. Uh, and we could be up to seven hundred and fifty. A couple of the other towns that I do some work with are fifty to seven hundred and fifty. That's a choice for the council to make, but we've got some things where we've purposely, like, like on some of our animal ordinances, the penalty's only supposed to be twenty-five dollars. Uh, that's not a deterrent. Uh, that's kind of a, a soft side of, everybody's got a pet and we don't wanna make it too hard on them and so forth. But that kind of thinking gets defied when somebody gets in your face over thirty-five, thirty-four, thirty-five animals. So, they don't all, uh, have the same attitude towards us being nice about it. Uh, so, uh, from my perspective, probably if we bring you back something, we'll be changing some ordinance penalties, also so that they're part of an arsenal that, uh, Weston has that he can cite people for more. And then on this door tag
Well, we're running out of time, John. John, we're running out of time.
All right, that's something we'll talk about again.
All right, well, why don't we do this tonight? I'm gonna suggest that we do the, uh, the third item, your code enforcement authority, add it to the agenda uh, as a discussion item, uh, at seven o'clock and then refer to committee.
That's right.
With something concrete.
Yeah, bet.
Okay, it's six fifty-seven, why don't we take a three-minute break and then we'll convene at seven o'clock. Okay, it's six fifty-seven. Why don't we take a three-minute break and then we'll convene at seven o'clock. Acceptance of the museum board minutes, acceptance of the library board minutes, acceptance of the economic development committee minutes, consent of park use permit for Live on the Square 2025, noise exemptions for June twenty-eighth, July nineteenth, August nine, August twenty-third, and September thirteenth. Approval of liquor license for Aranda Mexican Restaurant. Approval of ACH payment for the Department of Revenue in the amount of twenty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-five cents. Approval of special claims in the amount of seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. And approval of total claims in the amount of three hundred and six thousand, two hundred and two dollars and seven cents. We have one claim in excess of seventy-five thousand dollars, Suda Development Corporation, for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, a motion by Gandy to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Second by Ham. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all oppose? Okay, passage unanimously. All right, we have one public forum appearance, Brandy Meredith. Is she here? Oh, see her. All right. So we'll go ahead and proceed with resolutions, action items, and ordinances. First action item is consideration to set a public hearing to amend the Fairfield Forever Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Map on Monday, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five at seven P.M.
Motion to set the public hearing to amend the Fairfield Forever Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Map to Monday, March twenty-fourth.
Motion to...
Set the public hearing.
Set the public hearing? Second?
Second.
Second for Gandy. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say, oh, we need a rule call.
Esti?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Florine?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Second action item is consideration to set a public hearing for the preliminary and final plat for Sunrise Trail subdivision for Monday, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five at seven P.M.
Move to set public hearing.
Motion by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Esti. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye. Oh, rule call.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Florine?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Motion passed unanimously. All right. Third action item is consideration to set a public hearing for the plans, specifications, form of contract, and engineer's estimate for the Sunrise Trail Infrastructure Project for Monday, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five at seven P.M.
So moved.
Motion by Caness.
Second.
Second by Ham. Any discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Caness?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Florine?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Okay, passage unanimously. Next action item is to consider to set a public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-six budget, also on Monday, well, Monday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five at seven P.M.
So moved.
Moved by Esti?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? All in favor, oh, call for the call, please.
Esti?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Florine?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Okay, measure passes unanimously. Okay, we now have a public hearing on the matter of the plan, specifications, form of contract, and engineer's estimation for the Walton Club Golf Bridge project. So I'll now open the public hearing and take any public comment. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And move on to the next action item, which is to consider the plans, specifications, form of contract, and engineer's estimate for the Walton Club Golf Bridge project. And Marcus?
Marcus.
Did you want to address that?
Yeah. I think your public appearance is also made this matter that when you have time. Your public appearance has just walked in.
Oh, did you? Oh, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, I gave a brief overview of the project at the last council meeting. This is the replacing the Walton Club Golf Cart Bridge. And this is where we're replacing it with a pipe and dam. And there will be, I think it will be six, six forty-two inch pipes that will be replacing that golf cart bridge. And they'll be just letting the water flow through it. And then we'll just be putting a granular surface over the top of it. And then we'll be pouring head walls on the each side of the culvert. So that way it helps weigh the pipes down, so if there's water going through, it doesn't let those culverts float up. And yeah, our engineer's estimate is two hundred thousand. And we currently have about eighteen plan holders on that project. So I'm anticipating quite a few bids for that project, which is good. So I'm very hopeful that these, those bids will be under that engineer's estimate.
So the original estimate for the cost was one forty-four, one hundred and forty-four thousand?
I think it was around one sixty-five, one seventy with the, we had some contingencies in there, was around that. And then we added some head walls and then there was a little bit more dirt after we got it surveyed than what we anticipated. So that was kind of where those extra costs were at.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Any questions from council? I'm going to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Esti. The motion is to consider the plans, specifications, form of consent, engineer's estimate for the value for the Walton Club Golf Bridge project. Call the roll, please.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Florine?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Okay, next item is a resolution to consider tax abatement application for fifty-eight West Burlington Avenue.
Move to approve tax abatement application.
Thank you. Moves by Esti.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Esti?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Florine?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Now, the next one is a resolution to consider support for the participation in the Main Street Iowa program. And they have sent us a template to complete and which includes a recommendation for someone to sit on the board. So I think all we need to do here is have a motion to approve the completion of the template and give authority to the mayor to appoint someone to sit on that board.
So moved.
I'll second it. Moved by Gandy, seconded by Florine. Any discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Gandy?
Yes.
Florine?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Okay. Now we have an ordinance, which is in its first reading, consideration of amendment of vendor regulations. And you can read the memo. I was... The bids, the draft structure for the fees is as a resolution. It should come separately, shouldn't it?
Yeah, so...
It's not finished or filled out completely yet either.
So the ordinance states that we should state that we are having the fees and then the resolution is letting the council set the fees.
So once, we'll do the resolution after the season's over.
Yes.
So right now, we're just going to consider the ordinance.
I'd move to approve.
Motion to pass the amendment to vendor regulations from the first to the second reading.
Second.
By Caness, second by Gandy. Any discussion?
Yeah, does anyone know the impetus behind these amendments?
Yeah, that's in the memo here from Melanie.
We charge a dollar right now, which isn't worth... Yeah, it's just an increase of both fees.
They had looked at one particular item and when they looked at that, realized they needed to review the whole thing. So that's what they did and made the language agree all the way through.
So it wasn't like there was some situation that arose that felt like, okay, okay. It was just that, just...
Incoherent budget review time movement.
Right. We looked at the different fees that we charged.
That makes sense. I was just curious.
What type of equipment and when the business can be operating, all those kinds of things. Correct.
I don't think it's changing any of that. It's just fees.
Just a fee structure. It's still pretty modest, it looks like to me, so...
Agreed, yeah.
Okay, so any further discussion, questions? Okay, take a rule call vote.
Caness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Florine?
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Okay, Brandy Meredith, do you want to come up and address council?
Hi, I am Brandy Meredith. I own Mad Hatters here in town. I took ownership of the business in May last year. And I would like to do kind of like a little mini block party, celebrating the first anniversary of owning Mad Hatters. So my goal is to approach council to make sure that it would be okay or receive permission, I guess, to use Petra Park and the sidewalk to be able to use that as more like a beer garden. Good standing with the state on my liquor license side of things. Not had any issues with the local law enforcement with any trouble there. So pretty cut and dry, I would think. It sounds like I needed to just approach to have permission granted and then I would submit my request for my special liquor license to be able to hold that and then obviously go through the dram shop to extend the insurance coverage for that event as well. It would be on May third.
Right.
Was there something similar there last year? Okay, because I remember...
Yeah, it was for my husband's celebration of life tournament.
Oh, okay. And then you also utilized Petra Park too.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I was recalling.
You mentioned the sidewalk. Did you want to put, normally we have barriers that contain the beer garden.
Yeah, we could do that. I mean, it sounds like it would be pretty easy.
Did you want to take that out to the, block the sidewalk off? Is that what you're...
Not necessarily block the entire sidewalk off, but maybe just to utilize like a walk path to get from inside the building to Petra Park, just so that way it's contained within a beer garden atmosphere.
So you can move from the establishment to the beer garden with your beer.
But you're not going to let people carry alcohol out onto the street and then back...
No, it would just be the cordon dock area.
Okay.
Yeah, when we did Petra Park and we got the gift from Alex Stanley, one of the things that was discussed and it got built at the west end of the park was a plan for events just like this with that shed at the end with sound equipment in it and so forth and a fold-out bleacher in front of it. So this is exactly the kind of thing that was intended over there as far as the donor. As far as other things that we probably need to be sure about, the restriction of it so that minors can't go into the area where it's being served, I guess. We, in the past, I mean, we've had other events over there. They might construction fence, that plastic stuff, or snow fence, or some kind of entry gate with a latch or a lift-off cordon or something like that. Whatever you have so that you're sure you're regulating nobody coming in that's a minor.
Right. So what I would ideally like to see happen is have a snow fence across the backside of the travertine or the trap, whatever the marble-looking floor is, across the backsides. That way it kind of keeps people from being able to come in through the alleyway side and then block off the entrance to, I think it's Broadway. Block that entrance off, so there's only one way to go in and go out. And then obviously we'd have somebody there that would be able to card people as needed to make sure that whoever's going in and out is of age to...
What time of day would you be?
Break, okay.
What time of day will you be?
It'd be in the evening. So the goal is to have, as long as weather cooperates, that is, of course, have a couple of DJs to be able to kind of just help bring some atmosphere to downtown and...
Is that a weekend night?
Yeah, it would be Saturday, Saturday evening.
Would you go past midnight or...
Typically, we have a DJ go until one, but if that is an issue, we'll necessarily need to have it outside.
Past ten o'clock, we need to approve a noise exemption.
Okay. Ideally, we'd probably go with the DJ until probably one, but it's obviously up to discussion and approval.
I would suggest we approve this with a noise exemption already.
Yeah, I would second that motion.
And thanks, John, for letting us know, because I was curious about Mr. Stanley and whether or not he, you know, how he would feel about this. So it's nice to know that this was the intent of the park all along, so.
I'd actually spoke with John prior to this to find out what I needed to, what the path was, so advise that as well.
So we have a motion for May third. What time does it start?
It probably wouldn't start until probably eight, between seven and eight.
Let's just say seven, so you have extra time. To reserve Petra Park for a beer garden at seven P.M. until one A.M.?
To be on the safe side, probably two. Just so that way we have a chance to get all the alcohol, if there's any cans and stuff that are outside in the trash bag.
How late will you be serving?
I'm sorry?
How late will you be serving?
We are open until two. We are open until two.
So serving until two.
We wouldn't necessarily be outside that long, we would probably make sure to move all that stuff inside as needed to clear everything up, but...
So when we say until two and then she moves in early...
Do we need to allow for it earlier too, for her to set up the barricading system? Because that'll take some time.
That's why I said seven instead of eight. Is that enough time?
Can we do five, just to make sure?
Yeah, just so we can have it recorded, what you want it. So, a motion from five until eight PM on May third to two AM on May fourth.
And is that the entire time noise exemption, does it matter? Are we just...
I think the noise exemption would just kick in at ten o'clock.
Okay.
So with a noise exemption, wherever it's applicable.
Okay.
So we have a motion by Kness. I'll second it. Any discussion?
I thought you made the motion.
Yeah.
Terry, second it.
You spoke first.
Is there a friendly amendment we made? So, change the motion a little bit.
So I'll make the motion and Terry, you want to second it?
Yes, I will second it.
As I described.
I think you got it.
Thank you.
Well, just that we haven't voted yet.
There you go, we're done.
Any further discussion or questions? All right, call the roll, please.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, city attorneys report, John, four oh five South D Street.
Forty-five South D Street?
Yes.
Four oh five, right?
Yeah, four oh five.
Yeah, that's Mr. Napolio's house that he agreed with the court that it was a nuisance and that we could be involved in either its demolition or its reuse with somebody that would buy into it. There haven't been any people buying into it, he's been ghosting our city enforcement officer and the last time we talked about it, I went ahead and had a search done through the abstract company with the idea that we might just have to take it as a six fifty-seven A even if we've got his agreement up in the court, in the magistrate court, because if we completely demolish it, we may be dealing with more than the magistrate has jurisdiction over, if it costs twenty thousand dollars to demolish it and the magistrate's got sixty five hundred dollars of jurisdiction. I've already run into this in two other counties that will have to have a district court judge weigh in on it too. But it, the search disclosed that Mr. Napolio hasn't paid his second half taxes and that there's another entity that bought the tax certificate. So I know Terry on the council mentioned last time that there's a way you can notice the treasurer and the treasurer is supposed to then pay the person that bought the certificate and essentially put us in a position where we have the first priority because we're dealing with a nuisance. That'll happen, we have not filed a six fifty-seven A yet, I'm still, we're supposed to do three good faith attempts when we're getting ready to have the place declared a six fifty-seven A with Mr. Napolio and he's avoiding us. At some point, we'll publish in the newspaper if he keeps on ghosting Weston and after that, we will then go ahead and we will serve a copy of the six fifty-seven A on our treasurer and put that provision in the code that Terry mentioned to us in place as far as getting that tax certificate problem out of the way. So that's about all I can tell you right now, except Weston and I will be talking about it more in a conference call on, I believe it's Wednesday afternoon this week. So there's that to report on, that's not the only six fifty-seven A in town right now though, we've got, we got an individual Weston's been talking to up on North Fourth Street that basically can't maintain his house. I think he liked the way we handled our South Six property with an individual that admitted he couldn't maintain it anymore and Weston believes that he can convince this person both to look at the possibility of getting on the list at one of the multiplex public housing apartment buildings, which worked out great with our gentleman down on South Six Street. And if we go through those hoops, the property will probably be just deeded to us, at which point we'll have another place that we can deal with probably as an infill, just like we did with the South Six property. So the other possibility that we talked about with Weston was that it probably is dilapidated enough, it could be a six fifty-seven A and that process though, since we've used it before and it worked out nicely and Weston, in that situation, I felt he came, kind of came out looking like the good guy, where some people don't like us suing them in six fifty-seven A. The process that we started over on Sixth Street worked out just the opposite, Weston was able to help him relocate and that's, that's one of our policies, is if we, if we dislocate somebody, we try to make sure that there's a possibility in the community at least to relocate him. So there is also Mr. Goodman, Mr. Goodman, we had a conference call with our committee, Mr. Goodman is counterclaiming in a six fifty-seven A lawsuit. My opinion of the counterclaim is there's no possibility of him winning it, but that's just my opinion, I'm not the judge. But right now, that's about five months away from a possible court hearing and it could be twice that long, depending on whether the court thinks it can devote the time to the kinds of arguments involved with a nuisance, but it'll be a district court hearing. In the meantime, we were supposed to hear back from Mr. Goodman about the proposal he made that he would be listing it with a private broker and that would be up for sale and that it would be probably an attractive property for somebody to rehab. Weston knows most of the people that he felt could successfully rehab it and nobody wanted to touch it. This is the property that we've got almost nineteen thousand dollars held in escrow out at the Community First Credit Union and it is something that, it's fixable with our present circumstances. It's deteriorated to the point in the last four or five years since Mr. Goodman last showed up here at a council meeting and talked to us about it, bad enough that it probably qualifies for a six fifty-seven A. Dilapidated property standing on its own without the other criteria like being abandoned and being a public health hazard and just general disrepairs that has been ignored for more than twelve months by the owner. So that, that property at this point, I know both Weston and I have driven past it multiple times, there's no listing sign anywhere visible on any of the four corners of the property showing that he's done that and he assured us he would do that right away. So at this point, I think probably Weston will agree, we're probably at a point where if we were going to try to resolve something with him and give him some time to try to privately sell it, we're either going to have to say, end of March, we're back in court without this possibility or, you know, tell us something wrong if he had a heart attack or something in the last two weeks, we'll hear him out. We're not that cruel, but as far as the idea that he hasn't done what he said he would do in our conference call two or three weeks ago, there, we have to meet that, so...
Okay, is there any action you want us to take tonight on four oh five South D Street?
I, I think probably if you, if you tell me to file a six fifty-seven A petition, I will do that to make sure that we can trigger that provision that gets the treasurer to call off the tax certificate.
That's the only lien on the building.
Yeah, so I'll bring you back a resolution on that that matches up exactly with the statute, but at this point, I was hoping that Mr. Napolio would have talked with Weston and we might have some other arrangement as far as going in there. I think on March sixth, I don't know how it turned out, maybe Doug does, but I think we took bids.
Yeah, Jason, can you bring those bids back up?
I, I don't know what the bids were.
Yeah, so the bid tab, Zister bid at fourteen three fifty, Hawkeye eighteen thousand, Estel eighteen five, and Bob Brown excavation at twenty-six five thirty. And I don't, after your conversation now, John, I do not know, do we, do we ask counsel, do we put these on hold for thirty days? Where's your recommendations to the council?
Well, I'd say, yeah, put them on hold, but that fourteen thousand dollar figure, if that's real, that's pretty reasonable. Not that the others aren't reasonable, I would guess that maybe one of those contractors actually watches us at our meetings and might have heard something about there being eighteen or nineteen thousand dollars in escrow. That would prompt me to probably make a bid of that range, but anyway, yes, if we go that route.
That's a different building, that's not this building, the escrow.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of Goodman, I've got it overlapping in my head.
And we can't do anything with it right now regarding demo, right?
Right.
Until we do the six fifty-seven A?
Well, we've got him agreeing in the magistrate court that we could go and do whatever we need to do, but the problem with the demolition is jurisdictional again, the magistrate's going to pass a sand to the district court judge probably.
Because he's capped it.
And we'll still be waiting for a district court hearing like a six fifty-seven A.
Oh, so we don't have authority to take it down yet?
No.
I thought we did.
Well, we, the remedies in the magistrate court that the guy agreed to were anything from passing it on to someone that was going to renovate it to a tear down that was, originally it was going to be assisted by Mr. Napolio, which it might possibly have stayed within the bounds of magistrate sixty-five hundred dollar jurisdiction. If he was doing half the work, that would almost make sense with the kind of bid that's posted there at a different site, but I'm aware of a demolition that related to a property and it was under sixty-five hundred dollars, but this property is bigger than the one that I'm thinking of, so probably it continues to be a problem as far as magistrate versus district court jurisdiction.
So do you want a motion to...
Yeah, we need to move all the six fifty-seven A, I think.
A motion to move to six fifty-seven A for this property, John?
Yes, I think so.
For four oh five South D Street, so that's the motion that I would make.
Okay, so a motion to instruct the city attorney to pursue...
If necessary, I guess, it seems like maybe there's a possibility still that you could get in touch with the homeowner, but if necessary to move to six fifty-seven A.
Yeah, this is the one that Weston's having a trouble with, no communication from the guy.
So at the city attorney's discretion, permission to move forward on a six fifty-seven A at four oh five South D Street. That's the motion by Esti?
Second.
Second by Gandy, any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Esti?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Okay, the second item here is the code enforcement authority. The idea here is just to refer to the appropriate committee and have them...
Yeah, I did hand out something at the beginning of the study session and that is something that we had a, we had a work session on a Saturday one day and one of the couple hours that we devoted to things was an understanding of the available remedies that we have for substandard dwellings and the four pages here summarize all of the different things that are available through the codes, through our ordinance. So that is something I, I think we might review some of this again in committee, but the idea is that there are case-by-case assessments made on each of these situations where a property needs something and that already having been gone over a few times, sometimes we'll look at something and it still fits one of these other remedies and there's two places in here that fit what Terry told us about as far as ways in to get the county treasurer to step away from a tax sale certificate and we also, we could put some things in our ordinance, which I'm not necessarily advocating because it's already in the state code, about that tax sale certificate process. But right now, the most straightforward way to get that result is to have the six fifty-seven A on file, then give a copy of it to the county treasurer, then make sure the county has it on their agenda and they take it into consideration and it's pretty much the way I understand it, Terry, you would then, as treasurer at the time, you would have reported it to the board of supervisors meeting and recommended that we follow that statutory procedure and so that's probably the most direct way to get rid of that tax sale certificate.
Okay, so here, whether we want Weston to have authority to write a ticket to a homeowner, so we should refer this to a committee to modify the ordinance?
Yeah, yeah.
Property committee?
Property committee would be, that's where I think we've been looking at the housing code stuff, so...
So a move to move the consideration regarding, what is it, code enforcement authority to property committee?
Okay, a motion by Esti to move the question of the code enforcement authority to property.
Second.
Second by Kness, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Esti?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Couple other things, Your Honor, the city has filed some training reimbursement lawsuits against some of the officers that either went across the hallway or left for another job in another location out of our law center and we've had some of them in settlement agreements in the last, since the last council, we've had one of those that owed us a balance of about four thousand dollars that Denise has informed me he's paid that up now and we had another one that was on installment payments while he was waiting for a lump sum that he was going to receive and he just paid another thousand dollars on installments today, so those things work some of the time, they don't work all the time, but anyway, those, those two things are why we file those kinds of suits and a lot of times we'll reach agreements after the suit is served on the officer, they don't like that going on, if they can avoid it, especially if they're in a, in a better position and they have the ability to pay it off. Other things that I want to make the council aware of, I had a call and then I saw something in the news about it and we have a underground cave situation in this town that is heavily used by small furry animals. Foxes run in our storm sewers, they come out of our drains and so forth and someone claimed that they, they had seen a coyote and I think what they did is they read an article about other towns that are having coyotes and the Des Moines Register last Sunday had fifteen different towns approached to dealing with coyotes. I think, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but don't you have to permit somebody to do any trapping in town?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, that's our solution. Okay, well, that's our solution right now is we have an animal that's in some kind of hazardous position or perilous to the community confronting us. Most of these other towns are having problems with animals that are killing pets and foxes will do that, raccoons will do that and coyotes definitely will do that. Our solution to that would be to have the police department authorize a live box trap that's big enough to catch that kind of an animal. And I, I drive around town at night and I talk to my son who's conservation director. I've seen foxes, but I haven't seen a coyote. But if you hear about something like that, again, I think maybe we stick in with our water bill sometime or whatever, some information about who can be contacted if somebody wants to have trapping occur. And that is something that the city can help with a little bit. I don't, Dave, do you have live traps out at the law center? You don't, do you?
I think we have a couple.
Okay.
We don't usually have them.
All right. Well, that's, that's something that I can foresee maybe. It's a rare situation with the big animal, but it's not very rare with the foxes and so forth. And it depends whether that's a peril or if it's a mixed blessing. I mean, I, I had 10 cats living in my deck or under my deck and I don't have 10 cats around anymore. I'm afraid something must have nabbed a few.
Is that something the DNR would take care of if it's a coyote?
No, they won't. They don't have staff for it now. We usually let private citizen trappers, so they play by all the rules. Citizens can contact any, there are several trappers in the city and county. There is a fee, but they trap them live and then release them into the county area where it's safe is our biggest rules. It has to be a live trap.
Right. But now it's just a rumor?
Rumors and innuendos. I've never seen coyote. I've seen some foxes and some large raccoons come out of our system and a rat or two, but I won't, I won't scare you too much.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Couple other things. The legislature right now has about 15 bills on the table that have something to do with eminent domain. Most of them are about, at least six of them are aimed at carbon pipelines, but then they've got about that many more that are technical bills that deal with the rest of the eminent domain process. And they cleaned up the whole eminent domain statute about 10, 12 years ago and they came up with an owner's bill of rights and a whole bunch of extra due process procedures and so forth. It's something that we may want to watch and we may want to have a conversation with our senator and our legislators about whether they really need, need to change what's been working pretty well for the last couple of experiences we've had with eminent domain. The last experiences we've had with eminent domain were three steps of our sewer project and the airport. And we did do a number of eminent domain filings related to step one and two and also to the airport and they worked well under the way the statute was intended to work in the last 15 or 20 years. I don't know where it leaves us if they put some of the different things that they're talking about besides the carbon pipeline. And I don't know anything about carbon pipelines, so I don't know what to tell you yet, but I'll keep, I'll keep reading.
On that note, there's a legislative visit this Saturday morning at 7:30.
Right.
Where Shipley, Adrian Dickey and Helena Hayes will be present. I don't know the location, is it at the civic center?
It's at the civic center. I don't know if, the way I understand it, a lot of their agenda this time is going to be about education, so I don't know how prepared they'll come to talk about eminent domain. But if it comes up, it might be worth listening extra close because it'll affect us. Other than that, I noticed there were at least three stories about towns that are just like us as far as 718 squeeze and the House filed 718 from a couple of years ago caused a town, Fort Dodge, to reduce its staff by seven. And Storm Lake is doing a major tax increase with some things that they're pulling a couple loopholes on that I want to find out about because I didn't know there were any loopholes left with 718. But anyway, the other thing that's going on is at the same time that everybody's tightening their belts, the legislature's considering two bills that have made it through committee and the funnel so far. One of them raises their four month salary from $25,000 to 35 and the other raises it from $25,000 to 45. So, that's a little more than 3.2% of whatever they're suggesting to other governmental subdivisions. And that's a good question for somebody to ask the folks on stage on Saturday. Anyway, that's probably enough for me. But anyway, there will be some things coming down the pike now. The legislature's done with funnel week, so things that they're talking about now, they've either been made dead and then make it out of committee or the things that are there, they're seriously going to debate, okay?
All right. Thank you. Environment and Franchise Committee?
Thank you. Yeah, we met last Monday to review a proposed contract from Scar Grinding. This is the gentleman who's proposing to take over the compost site as a private enterprise. The contract was forwarded to John after our meeting and then we also are going to be speaking with FIDA. I don't know if.
I've sent them the contract.
Okay, so they can review the contract because obviously we, we leased that land from FIDA, so I don't know if they would still be interested in leasing it to the city if we're just going to subcontract that out. There's really no council action that's being requested tonight. We just had a lot of discussion about the contract and would like county, the city attorneys' comments on it.
Okay, thank you.
I'm happy to answer any questions though, if anyone has anything.
Guess we don't have any.
That's good.
All right. Administrative and Department reports, Doug?
Wanted to let the council and the public know that surveys for the 65 gallon trash can versus the 96 gallon trash can has gotten out. And the deadline to have those back is April 1st. So far, we've gotten around 130, 140 responses that they would like that of the 4, 3, 300 accounts that we have. So, that's, those are being collected. I did touch base today with Waste Management, so they're asking, making sure that we're having the conversations moving forward. There will also be, Waste Management is creating flyers or postcards that they will be sending out in June to remind people that these trash cans will be showing up in July or a little bit before and they will drop them in their front yards and they'll be able to take them and those cans belong to the property. The, I sent out an email last week in regards to the Arts Convention Center and at the council's pleasure, I shot out some dates and so far I've gotten some responses and they were looking at April 15th, which is a Monday. I don't know if any.
14th.
Huh?
That's the 14th, isn't it?
Oh, I apologize.
Well, I could be wrong, but I thought it was 14th.
No, you're probably not.
It looks like it's a Monday.
The Monday is the 14th. But the Arts Convention Center shot me some dates, the 14th, 16th and 17th would work, but so far I've got a vote for Monday. That's one vote. So, if there are any more, that'd be fine. You can let me know, but they'll need to know soon.
In the evening on the 14th?
No, it'll be.
During the day?
It'll be during the day from 9:00 AM till noon.
Okay.
Note, the 14th is a council meeting day as well.
Yeah.
Maybe more efficient, but yeah. Overtime pay.
Seven dollars. So, that's up to you, but I sent out an email. You can respond to me, but they kind of need some time. So, everybody's preparing all of their presentations. This time I didn't lose my report. So, wanted to let the public know that yes, the fire station contractors are mobilizing and they're setting up fences. They'll be bringing in equipment and we're looking.
Right, the fences, we saw, the fence is up.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
So, they will be coming in and working very soon. And then I have been reviewing a few policies, the code of business conduct. I do have the first draft done. And then the city financial policy is being, is under review and I will present that most likely, I will ask for it to be reviewed by the committees or the council to have it referred to committees for review. Just want to change some of the language to make sure that it's up to date and if there's anything that we may have missed and we'll be sending that draft out shortly. That's all I have for now.
All right. So, we're going to go into closed session here. Why don't we take a break, let the chief clear the room. He'll come back and take a motion to go to closed session and close the doors and we'll take care of business.